And said, I've done some research in Oak Brook Terrace and Village of Claritin Hills have home rule, but they have passed the power not to levy additional property taxes. And they instituted a home rule property tax cap ordinance. So what I heard, one of the negatives of the home rule is, well, if we do that, you guys, us guys on the board can go do whatever we want. And so by having that cap, that would at least address that issue. I think there are some other concerns that I'm learning about home rule. But Brian was, I don't know, convincing, but he certainly, you know, he believes that's the way to go. And so I'm trying to learn about that. John Corcoran shared some information about home rules. So I think, you know, that has positives. I see benefits to home rule. The biggest one I saw is I believe we can increase the fee on the video poker machines from $25 a year to $1,000 a year. And we have, what, 15 machines? So that's five.
We would like to get 15. If there's possibility, we'll get to that.
But that's 5,000 more or 4,000, you know, whatever. The numbers are close to 5,000 if we could get there.
Yeah.
So I think there's some other things, I remember like parking or the trucks or something. So I see benefits, but again, it's addressing the concerns that I've heard, Nick, we've all heard.
Yeah, and they're good concerns, you know. Let's face it, when we, when I had that town hall meeting back in July of 2010 and said, you know, we had a couple, you know, how did, you know, here we are, how did we get here and what's our plans? Home rule or property taxes? And said at that time, and still believe, I don't want to raise property taxes. That's why to me, home rule look good. I knew, you know, and I think the board at that time understood that there was the right kind of home rule community to raise property taxes based on a vote of the board. I was aware that there were other places that may have put in restrictions. You know what? I'll admit, didn't, you know, we learned as we went. Now we look back at, what, two and a half years, three years almost, and, you know, I would have no objection to putting something like that. Or, you know, you think about a disaster like what happened with the tornadoes in Illinois some time ago, there wouldn't be any property tax in the first place, I guess. But the point would be, there might be an emergency where you would want to be able to raise property tax and maybe requiring a super majority or something, or a cap. But, you know, in terms of, in the immediate future, if this street bond, which is what we're talking about, which is on the referendum, doesn't pass, are there any thoughts or suggestions on what to do in the near term? Because again, we all know, we have streets that are deteriorating, and right now, the interest rates are low. And the longer we rate, we run, we wait, we run a risk that the rates will go up. So you suggested perhaps, you know, vehicle sticker increase. And, you know, maybe we don't do the total scenario number three for $2.5 million. Maybe we do Plan A and get the worst seven or eight or nine streets, I forget the number, and I believe it was, what, 1.3 million.
Right. Do that referendum.
Well, I think that would be the only option.
You know, a $50 increase or something like that would generate 135,000 a year based on 2,700 stickers. You borrow a million three for, on a 10-year loan, and you use the new revenue and some of the old revenue to pay that off. But you only got those streets, and it's tied that money up for 10 years. That's certainly isn't.
So I agree, there's a potential, home rule's potential, but I also think, again, I started out saying, I believe we have things that we could cut, reduce the budget, but that's my belief, you know, everybody has their own.
I believe that it's got to be a combination of new revenue cuts and expenses and better use of the resources we have.
What future item differing up in the comprehensive plan that I want you to make sure you put on your list for the long term is that there was a very fruitful discussion in the comprehensive planning meeting about District Mall and Jillney Road and Walgreens and that area, whatever you guys call it. We think, you know, when you look at the sales tax revenue from that improvement that was funded by the village a half back in the day, we gave them a tax, a sales tax, 50% sales tax for the, for that, to develop that property.
Up to a certain amount.
Yes, up to 5,000. That was a very interesting development because we did a lot of sales tax revenue because they shared that information with us approximately six years. They had to share that information with us. Otherwise, the state doesn't share any information about what those retailers provide to the village. I think the corner is looking terrible. I think the retailers are C, B, C players. They're not As like up there, like a Walgreens and the others. And I think that we have to open some meetings up with our retailers and have a meeting with them as a development, sort of a group, have a coffee or a meeting and welcome them and talk about feedback, about how we can make their lives better as retailers and see if there's anything we can do about the corner to make it be attractive to retailers that are, you know, A or Bs, so we can get more sales tax from that particular. That's a long-term item that is a business development initiative, but certainly I think that goes to the revenue side. You get some food establishments in there that, you know, are a little bit more name brand, and you're going to, you're going to get a lot more money in than the people we have there right now.
And if I remember, the committee was interested in looking at that, and they could talk and they could meet with the folks, but then any forgiveness of the taxes would come from us, right?
Absolutely.
They had zero power to do that.
Right.
I think they stated that.
Yep.
But they would explore that option if that would increase revenue, which I think...
Right. That would all be done by the trustees. We would all have to approve, I mean, that's all a patrolling. But what I'm saying is, I think having a business development arm of the plan commission or a little group that talks about business development with the owners of these areas could be a way to just open up a dialogue with them, especially with the undeveloped land that's owned by the bank on the side there, to see if we can attract some people that could buy that, those tracks of land. And instead of just waiting for it to happen, we could maybe potentially do a little bit more proactive things.
A number of years ago, in the early 2000s, I think, the vote started down the track of a tip for that whole triangle.
Yeah.
It didn't go forward, and, you know, I regret that being carried that out at that time.
Right.
Perhaps up there, that might be something to, still on the table to look at.
Yeah, no one knew the answers at the meeting.
Just like home rule.
I think we all said that we should spend time with business development or the whole village, figure out how we can do that. It was just mentioned, and I wanted to make sure you guys knew that, it's a long-term revenue plan for those areas. And that'll be, you know, take a lot of time to do that.
Okay, how about anything left on the street bond discussion? Any input on what the trustees want? You know, we have the website, we have the plan out there, we can send out smoke signals to inform the people. Any other suggestions on how to get people convinced that this is in all our best interest that we have a village that has nice streets?
Well, I think condo associations are often areas where referendums may not pass. So I think having, maybe Norm has some ideas how we can reach out to, not only Wilshire Green, but Acacia, La Grange. We did have some, you know, interaction with them. I mean, I think we just have to really talk to people, and that's how to understand where we're at. I don't know if we host some kind of an event here, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but maybe not. But I think we have to get the word out, get our neighborhoods involved in this.
I'm shaking my head, although I have to ask council, we, as, I understand that we can't spend village resources to advocate for or against the referendum. Can we hold an event to say, you know, like, here's what the street, here's what we intend to do with the streets, and this is why we need the street bond? Or what the street bond would do, or pick something like that?
Do you provide factual information, you just can't advocate either that the people who attend the public forum vote for it or against it? So you can explain to them what you're proposing as far as what's on the referendum question, but the thing that's prohibited by statute is to tell the people, you should vote for this, or you should vote against this.
But if somebody, interested party, that wasn't part of our trustee group, wanted to have a meeting in this room to discuss the merits of it, would that be...
Will they?
Would they use the room without being, you know?
You can't use village resources.
Okay, but nothing like that?
No.
Okay.
To advance a referendum.
But we could have another town hall meeting, much like we went through the infrastructure to talk about it, answer questions, the same kind of thing. Put up the numbers again about the 10-year, the 20-year, the 15-year, you know, explain what we need and why we need it. I would think, right? It's information.
Provide factual information, you just can't tell the people to vote for it or vote against it.
And I agree with Tom, I think that's probably a good idea, especially as it gets closer to the election. I mean, if we did like a week before the election or 10 days, I mean, people aren't thinking, you know, March right now, but I think there may be some benefit, because then you may get some momentum in the crowd, and then hopefully those people will take the message out and impress their neighbors as well.
What day is the elections, the 18th? March 18?
March 18.
So trustees, start looking at your calendars and let Kathy send something out. We'll look at something, what, maybe the week before?
Oh, we have a board meeting.
Or should we go two weeks?
The board meeting the week before?
Yeah. Board meeting is the week before.
Kathy said the board meeting be all about the bond?
That, or have a special one.
Yeah, right.
We could do that. I mean, that probably makes the most sense, because we're scheduled to be here a lot. Trustee Henshaw?
Amy brought it up. I believe Wilshire Green has a discussion group every couple of months or so, and I don't know of a good word, but maybe a road show. I don't know who would go. I have attended the discussion groups, I would volunteer to go. But again, I think what Rich is saying is we can't vote yes or no, but we can say, you know, the last time this road was done was 20 years ago, or the last road bond we had was in 96, 97, and went 15 years. So kind of explain things, answer questions, the state of the affairs, maybe explain why good roads are important to a community, curb appeal for resale, so if we could hit Wilshire Green, maybe Acacia, get on their agenda for their meetings. And again, I see it as education, not saying yes or no for that.
Can we do that?
Yes, you can provide factual information, you just can't advocate for or against it.
Trustee Henshaw?
Amy brought up condo association and homeowners association. I happen to be on the Wilshire West Board on the building that I live in, I've been on there for some time, been many times before that too, but usually, well, of course, we only have five meetings a year, but every meeting, I've been doing this the last 200 years, if there is some issue pending in the village, it's highly important, not the little stuff, I mean, the main stuff, like the streets, things like that. I will make a comment in the open session about what's going on, what we're doing, what we're hoping to do. I don't tell people how to vote or not to vote. And it's, it's become an idea of President, usually she, she asks me at the end of the meeting, have you done anything to any village matters? And I want to just bring to the people attention. And usually, there's something I can say about it, but we don't have, like here, a lot of times, we don't have a lot of people in meetings. And then we have three times as many as we had the meeting before, so it's kind of hard to pin down the number of people, but at least it gets the word out to people about what's going on in the village.
Mr. Burson is here, and I want to put you on the spot, but with respect to Acacia, perhaps could you bring that up to, you know, your board and...
We've talked about it, and the problem is, I mean, we have less people than you do. You know, the meeting, I don't, we get three people, we're lucky. So there's no point if somebody's bringing us to be coming to talk there, because nobody's going to be there.
But don't you have a bigger meeting at the end of February?
That's our annual meeting, yeah. That's a good point.
But that's, but you also have elections that day too, right?
Yeah, but the election's already done. All right, and that's a good point of it. The meeting, you can't come to the...
Be happy to come there and talk to them, as I have in the past.
Yeah, I think I will bring it up, our meeting is next Monday, Tuesday, I'll bring it up for a meeting. And I'll be going next month, but I mean, I'll let the, I'll be back for the meeting.
Be back to vote too?
Yeah.
Will you be back to vote?
I'll be back to vote. But I think, yeah, if you came, somebody at the annual meeting made the pitch. Well, the point is, is you see, you can't, as a board member, you can't push it one way or the other. Your lawyer said, is that the point?
That's right.
But you could.
Right, you can't.
But you could as a citizen.
We can, yeah, I've been trying to, yeah, but okay. No, I think if somebody came to the annual meeting and presented your road show with all the charts and stuff, and explained exactly what we're going to do, I think that, that would help, I mean, you know, at the end of the meeting. Good, that's right before the elections, what, March 18?
18.
And so our meeting's the end of February, so that's a pretty good timing. My understanding is that the vote is the majority who vote for it one way or the other. The majority vote council, but how many people vote, is that right?
Yes, the majority of people vote.
Then how many people, whether 12 people vote or 12, it doesn't make a difference, right?
Right.
So, all right, I will, I'll let you know after I talk to the, yeah, that's what we get done with you.
Thank you for this.
What about, what about, what does Ashbrook do? I don't know what they have.
We'll have to reach out to them.
I would say from the crowd that we have, they were overwhelmed.
They were all for it. I know that meeting, everybody at the meeting should do it for 10 years too. Do you remember, right?
Yeah.
It was, they said, to pay him, get over it. But that's, but it's the naysayers who've got the problem.
Yes, exactly.
In the back, Mr. Matt?
Two points on this conversation that I wanted to make. The first, I'm waiting for that thing to go off again. The first is that, because you can advocate, advocate for it, and what I learned in researching other referendum items similar, is that it's good to get a group of citizens together who would like to advocate for it. And one way to do that, I would think, would be to look back at the town hall video and see who those people were that were talking for it. And maybe the gentleman up here might want to call them and get a group of them together to advocate for it via committee for it that's pro it. In order to, to help facilitate the information getting around, I think the village should not just do a road show, but should also have some materials available that make easy presentation for a group of citizens or someone else who might want to present or convince at a coffee or something else.
We're working on that.
And so don't wait for 10 days before. The other point that I wanted to make is, in conversations that I've had with other community members on this topic, that I think a point that you should hear is that there is reluctance to go with the referendum without seeing some of those Plan E things go into effect. I don't think you will get buy-in by a majority if there is not a similar belt tightening happening in the village visible. So just want to put that out there, that if you are hoping it to go just on the referendum merits itself, what I'm hearing is, that's going to be difficult. But I don't live in Ashbrook. Or Acacia.
That's exactly right. You're not going to, you're going to have to show this community that there's more to this than the referendum on the bond issue. You're not going to buy the bond issue, I'm telling you that, because I'm a person who's not going to vote for it. I want to hear more substance in what's happening here before I'm going to vote for a bond issue. And I'm brave enough to stand up here and tell you the truth. I'm not voting for it unless I see other substantive things that this board is going to take.
What would you, what...
Well, I heard several, I think that's the beginning. It's like, you know, that's the beginning. We need to get that energy going, that synergy going, we need to talk these things happening. But these are other things we're looking at, because we're not, we're open-minded, we're not, you know, we're looking at all of these other issues. There's nothing that we, we'll turn over every stone, we're going to look at all what we're doing, we're going to measure ourselves, we're going to be accountable, we're going to have, you know, we're going to be, and you can point out things right now, there are people on this board who can point out items that need to be looked at. And you can do some calculations, and you can say, this could save us X. That shows energy for something. There's no energy here. You're just cleaning out. And this is, there's a lot of suspicion here because of the fact in previous years, we tried to get home rule, we tried to get tax increases, you didn't get them, you felt that on your face. And the population of this village looks at that as if it's just another taxing gimmick on the fog of war.
Compared to home rule, yeah, we learned, we learned from the experience collectively, both people for it, against it, you know. It wasn't passed, I understand that. But you know what? There were a lot of people who voted for it, who in effect got the message, and I hear from trustees now who may have been against it back then, that they're starting to see benefit to it. So, you know, the positive comes from the learning experience. We're open-minded, we put two referendums to address general village needs, like the debt going up, the payments, that we do need street and infrastructure, that we are shorthanded, one full-time police officer, and about to become shorthanded a police chief that needs to be replaced. So, you know, we tried that. We could all point to things that need to be done, sure. There are things that can be done, but some of the things that we need to do take money, and we don't have the money. We can't raise rates. We haven't raised property taxes in 18 years. How many people are today living?
Well, I don't know, I raised every year. But I don't know, I've been $3,000, three years ago, I've been $3,000 more on property taxes.
We haven't raised them in 18 years for the village, other than what has come about through the appreciation.
Everywhere.
So.
There's no appreciation in the real estate. Is that a whole different subject you could offer?
Right, right.
What I'm saying, if you want to sell this thing, you've got to sell it. And I realize you can, you know, intimidate people to do this.
And I'm not going to tell people that we're going to do something that we can't do. And I'm not going to put it out there and say, oh, you want, you know, here's what we're going to do, or here's what we'll do for you.
No, not with that.
And then have it get shot down someplace else.
But that's the whole point. It's not to get out there and say something you're not going to do, but out there and say something you're going to do. That's what the population wants to hear, what are you going to do? Not, not just verbiage for the sake of verbiage, put out things that you're really going to do. This board needs to be about cutting the cost of operations here. You have, you have, this, 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 the village's been around here forever, it has structure in it that needs to be changed, because it no longer fits the, the needs of the people in here, and they can no longer afford it. Unless you change those things and work on changing them and be open-minded, you're not going to have, you're not going to sell these things.
Mr. Henney, I wish I had you with me in advocating for the home rule way back when, because that was exactly an argument that I made, was that the village had been here for 50 years, almost 50, and we were stuck with one type of situation, and maybe it was now time for us to catch up to the 1990s or the 2000s by becoming a home rule community and going forward so that we could raise revenue without taxing ourselves. But you know what? We've had enough.
But I don't want to disappoint you. I am also against home rule. So I wouldn't have been, you and I would not be on the same page.
John's had his hand up for a while.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I do have a couple of disparate thoughts. Frank, you're going to be here next meeting?
I should be.
Okay, so we have time to develop our accolade list. But in all seriousness, Rich just mentioned it, you know, I think, Frank, honestly, you've been giving us a hometown discount.
I should get it.
And, you know, and now, you know, we've got a pretty big chair to fill there, you know, and what we've been paying for what you've been giving us, it's going to be hard to replace that. So that's just another challenge that's coming down the pike.
I appreciate this.
You know, I just, a couple of things, you know, drags, you just talked about, you
know, we're paying, I think, $100,000 a year for debt service. Does that sound about right?
No, it's actually, it's about 160.
Oh, yeah, you're, yeah, you're right. Absolutely, so it's even worse.
It was the, it was 100,000 bump up.
Right. Yeah. Can anybody, can anybody tell me what that was for? And I'm just asking that rhetorically, you know, because this is going to come back when we talk about how long the streets need to be financed for. We've got this $160,000 albatross now for the next eight, 10 years that isn't producing anything for it. And we'll be in the same situation if we extend that street bond out too far. We'll be at a time where we're going to need to do more, and we're going to have that debt hanging there. So I would encourage you to be as quick and short on that as possible. You know, God love it, another drag, we talked about that Heritage Center. You know, it's just, it's a money pit. It's just going to continue the nickel and diamonds, and we just have to face that and understand that that is so much a nice to have, and we can't afford nice to haves. And we need to figure out what we can get out of that, if anything. You know, finally, just to pile on again, it is, it is a gesture, it's probably more symbolic than the dollars that we'll save, but I do think that a vote on discontinuing the pay for elected and appointed officials would be a very strong statement to make to the citizens as you've asked them for money. Thank you for my due indulgence.
How about we, how about we address that at the March board meeting right before the election? I'll be happy to put an ordinance out there to eliminate all elected official stigglings.
Why wait too much? Why wait too much?
To go forward, you know, and then we can show that to the people, say, there's something concrete, we're going to save you this amount.
I'd do it next month.
Yeah, I would agree. Put it out in the general next month, we'll apply that.
Well, it won't be effective next month, it'll be effective next year.
I think February is it... Maybe we talk about it before we're in voting.
Pass the ordinance.
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, that shows them there's some activity, right? That's, it's more perception sometimes.
I like, I like the idea. We'll talk about it in February, we'll put it on, you know, we finish it there, fine, if not, we do it. I thought that the timing right before the election for March would be a good time.
Might get too much out of it.
Yeah, maybe.
Before we end, I got, I got a quick question for Rich, in your book.
Go ahead.
To make sure I'm set on our responses, we as a board cannot advocate, but I as a resident could put a yard sign in my yard, I could wear a sandwich forward and walk up and down the road, right? I, as a resident, I can do that, I just can't do it as a board. Is that right?
You can't identify, you cannot identify yourself as Village Trustee Henshaw.
But I can be resident Henshaw, right?
Joe Blow.
Just blow this and not a board.
Can't use any village materials, can't use any village facilities, you can't use your local office to advocate for or against a referendum.
Thank you.
You'll make yourself invisible for the next three months.
I think we should also look at the term limits too for the elected officials.
That's a great idea.
Put that on there as well. Now, Rich, can you work on, work something up for discussions for February?
Sure.
On, on term limits for elected officials?
Would be a referendum.
Would have to be a referendum?
Yes.
Okay.
One, you were talking about bonds. Usually on bonds, when money is cheap, you go long, or money is expensive, you go short.
Like aggressive lenders.
That's, that's a rule of thumb, so, I think it should be, you go to 15 years, it's probably, this money is very cheap, so 15 years is far ahead. A lot of times, people want to pay things off, but it's cheap money, take it forever.
I appreciate that, that, that input on there. That was one of the reasons I thought 15 years, because of the rates are lower and, you know, I try to, you know, it sounds like I want to raise taxes all the time, I really don't, I want to try to keep it down, but in any event, we need to move along, so I'm going to, we have some input for things to do for the next meeting. So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I will make the motion to adjourn to executive session.
I had a question.
Five.
Oh.
Sure. Can I make a statement?
Sure, sure.
Chris, not 6403, I own it, of course. I've heard you say before, you said it again tonight, that the village hasn't had a tax increase in, what'd you say, 18 years, 15 years? You mean a tax increase by referendum, is that correct? Because you do raise...
That's what I'm referring to. We have not physically raised the, you know, the rate to say we're getting more money. What we're getting is because of the, well, with PTAL now, the tax cap, but as the assessed What we're getting is because of the, well, with PTELL now, the tax cap, but as the assessed valuations goes up, we've been getting more money. So we've been at the same level, basically, for the eighteen years.
Can't you raise up to the tax cap every year?
Well, we do that to take advantage of the assessed valuations, although...
But that is a tax increase, you have the option of not, of choosing to not raise it up to that increase.
Correct.
Right, so there is a tax increase every year.
Up to five percent of the C cap.
So I just, I just want to clarify that, because I think that's a disingenuous statement to say that...